Well, good evening, everybody. Ben Doerr here. I'm the Executive Director for Minnesota Gun Rights coming at you live from our full-time headquarters here in Northfield, Minnesota. Some folks are going to see this video who haven't perhaps seen videos from us before. So I'm going to be shooting this video in a little bit different format than I typically would. But guys, let me know where you're checking in from. Let me know where you're watching from. If you're watching this on YouTube, feel free to leave a comment in the comments section. And I'm going to post this right here in the comments for those of you watching live on Facebook right now. I'm going to pin that. Guys, I need you to take some action today. I've got an update for you. This is not going to be a very long broadcast tonight. But let me get this, let me get this watch party started here real quick. We'll post this. We're looking good. We have Kyle checking in. How you doing, Kyle? We have Ed in Lonsdale. We have my buddy Ben. You got a great name, man. Got Ben Phillips checking in. We got Mike. Christine, she's great. Christine's checking in from Sioux Falls. I got a sister who lives in Sioux Falls. We have Michelle Warrior. Michelle, that's what she is. She's a warrior. She's in Prior Lake. We have Steve Baker checking in, Scott Carlson, John. We have Mike. We have Tony. All right, I'm going to jump into this because I don't want to bore everybody to tears. And again, some people are going to be watching this on a different platform than normal. But so what do we have now? So here it is. It's Wednesday, the 22nd of May. For those of you who do not know, Monday at midnight, last Monday at midnight, the regular session of the Minnesota Legislature adjourned, and they have not kicked off their special session yet. That is coming up very, very shortly. So right now, there's no action being taken on the floor. There's still committee hearings happening, and it's all a big jumble of nonsense, but I'm not going to bore you with the boring stuff. But we're watching all of that stuff. And so here's what we have. The special session is coming up very, very soon. It's going to last just a couple of days, maybe a few days. But but some legislators were saying possibly tomorrow on Thursday. I don't think that's going to happen anymore. They're saying maybe Friday, but they want to have the special session done before before Memorial Day. So we don't know for sure when it's going to be, but it's going to be very, very soon. It's going to be very, very soon, and it's not going to last very long. So I need you guys, again, it's going to be, it could be as short as a day, maybe two or three days, but we don't expect it to last much longer than that. So I need you guys right now, before you do anything else, before you go anywhere else, click on the link and send your pre-written email to your lawmakers telling them yet again that you're opposed to any and all gun control being passed in the wee hours, in the late hours of the 2019 legislative session. So Alan says, are there any gun control, is there any gun control tacked onto any spending bills? No, not that we have seen so far. In fact, this is what we've been told. This is what Capitol insiders are telling us, that Republicans, anti-gun, weak Republicans are the ones who, it could be anti-gun, we don't know for sure. This is just what we've been hearing out of St. Paul, so take it for what it's worth, that they went to the governor and to Speaker of the House, Melissa Hortman, and with Paul Gazelka, and said, no gun control in these final budget bills. We're not going to pass any. We don't want any. We are told that that was agreed upon. That's what we've been told. Now, do we take anything at face value? No, never have, never will, right? They could try anything, but it bodes well. We're being told that both, that all three of them, that Tim Walz, Melissa Hortman, and Paul Gazelka have agreed not to pass gun control in these last budget bills. So that right there is a good sign. It's a darn good sign. And so far, we have not seen anything. Of course, when this special session kicks off, they got all these new bills are going to be introduced, and we'll have to see what is in them. But again, whatever happens here, it's going to be very short. It's going to happen very quickly, and it's going to be over before we know it. It's going to be over before we know it. That's why I need you guys to send another pre-written email to your lawmakers telling them to oppose this gun control. The link that I have posted here, I'm going to drop it right here into the watch party. I'm going to pin that. That's what I need you guys to do right away. That's the most important thing. Now, why? The question is why? I actually got a message the other day from a really, from a really sweet woman, and she said, she wants me to explain why we make phone calls and send emails to lawmakers. Is it effective? Does it work? What does it do? So I'm going to, I'm going to give a little one-minute spiel here real quick, guys. For anybody who doesn't know, for anybody who's sitting there going, ah, doesn't mean nothing. Doesn't mean nothing. They won't listen to us anyway. I'm not going to make a phone call. I'm not going to send an email. I love that. My wife, my wife and boys, my little boys gave me this for Christmas last year. Says, I love Dad. I love my boys. Um, anyways, the question is, these emails, these phone calls, do they work? What do they exactly do? The answer is, they do everything. Now, if you're sitting in some sort of poly-sci garbage class in some university somewhere, please see if you can get your money back and leave, because everything they're going to teach you in that class is garbage. Power does not rest in lobbyists. Power rests in the people. The people are where power comes from. I, I guess technically, I'm a lobbyist, technically, but I have no power in St. Paul outside of the members and supporters of Minnesota gun rights. And so to this, to this young man who's going to watch this and is wondering, and again, I'm responding, I don't want to use her name, I don't want to make this odd or anything. But but the answer to your question is, do it, does it work? The answer is yes. The members and supporters of Minnesota gun rights have sent 120,000 emails to lawmakers in St. Paul and in DC opposing red flag gun seizures and universal gun registration. And it works. It works because all of these people are elected officials. People had to go to the polls and fill in their name and elect them into office. If they can be elected to office, they can be unelected. They can be kicked out of office. Again, I, as a lobbyist or as a grassroots leader or whatever, I can't elect these people or unelect them. My vote counts the same as everybody else's vote. But as an organization, if we can get the word out to tens of thousands or hundreds of thousands of gun owners at election time and say, your representative voted against your Second Amendment rights, those people who all heard the same thing about their anti-gun lawmaker, if they choose to do so, can rise up, go to the polls, and vote these people out of office. So bring that all back around to the legislative session when these lawmakers are sitting there trying to save their political hides, and they're getting hundreds and hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of emails, they're going, oh, my gosh, these emails are coming from people in my district, and those people in my district can either reelect me or unelect me and throw me out of office. That is the power, not greasy, slimy little lobbyists in St. Paul, not the corporate media, the press, not the fake news. It's none of that. The power is in the people. And so when our membership sends well over 100,000 emails just from here in Minnesota to lawmakers telling them that if they vote for gun control, they're going to get wiped out at election time, they're going to get in big trouble, that is effective. In fact, it is the only way to be effective. So I hope this answers the question for the young man who, who was being asked about in the messages last night with the wonderful woman who was asking these questions. She said her son didn't really understand whether or not this stuff was effective. So I hope, I hope that makes sense. Gun owners put these people in power. Gun owners can remove these people from power, but only if they are mobilized, if they're all working together, if we're all on the same page, fighting with the same, you know, using the same message, fighting the same way. That's how, that's what makes organizationally Minnesota gun rights the most powerful grassroots organization in the state of Minnesota, bar none, bar none. So everybody needs to make the phone calls. Everybody needs to send their emails. We can't, if everybody sits out, we lose. If everybody goes, eh, my legislator doesn't care one way or the other. I live in an anti-gun district, so I'm not going to bother sending a message or doing whatever, because they're not going to listen. It doesn't matter. It doesn't matter if you live in an anti-gun or a pro-gun district, or if your legislator is pro-gun or anti-gun, because word gets around, okay? Think of John LeSh, Representative John LeSh, who sat there and said, my district is anti-gun through and through. I know it's totally anti-gun, and John LeSh himself is anti-gun, yet that dude was just blown away because he's received 35 to one pro-gun emails from in his own district. For every one person sending an email saying, pass this gun control, Representative LeSh, for every one person, 35 others were sending emails saying, don't vote for this stuff or we'll kick you out of office. And let me tell you, all of those legislative assistants, all that staff, all those lawmakers are talking, going, how many emails did you get today? How many emails did you get today? I got, I got 40. Oh, geez, I got, I got 52, you know? How many? Like, we don't know. We don't know. But they're all talking, and it all bespeaks a massive grassroots army, okay? So I hope that all makes sense. I hope that answers the question. That is what Minnesota gun rights does, is what we do very well, quite frankly. There are a lot of anti-gun lawmakers who thought they could get away. They thought they could get away with voting against our gun rights. Rod Skoy, Lyle Coonan, Joe Radinovich, Will Morgan, Tim Faust. These were anti-gun lawmakers who thought, you know what? Nobody's ever going to know that I voted anti-gun. I'm just going to, I'm just going to do this. And we went after them in the 2014 elections. We went after them in the 2016 elections. We went after them in the 2018 elections, and gun owners, God bless their hearts, decided to relieve these poor lawmakers from the burden of public service. And these anti-guners are no longer in office, okay? So this is what we will continue to do, and this is our constant political threat to lawmakers. Oh, and, and it is, it's a promise. We promise you, if you vote against our gun rights, if you stab us in the back, if you turn on gun owners, we will come after you in 2020, we'll come after you in 2022, in 2024, in 2026, as long as we have to. And we will, we will, we will expose you to the gun owners in your districts. So that is the Minnesota gun rights model, and quite frankly, it's the only one that works. Every other model of putzing around the Capitol and snoozing in the corner and kissing political backside, all of that depends on chance and the whims of lawmakers. If there's any success there, it's not because of a lobbyist, it's not because of that one person talking to all of those people. It was simply the winds of politics that decides how stuff goes, if that's how you do it. When you have an army of people who are fighting for their freedom and aren't being bought off, duped, lied to, or believing the political BS coming out of politicians, that is how you, that is how you force the winds of change in St. Paul. See? Because while politicians are sitting here going, where's the wind blowing? Where's the wind coming from? While lobbyists are wandering around the Capitol, being blown about by politicians, who are being blown about by the winds of the political spectrum, folks like us, Minnesota gun rights, you and me, we are out here, we are the wind. We are pushing them where they need to go and letting them know what's going to happen if they stab us in the back. So I hope that answers the question. I hope that answers the question. But to get back, to get back on, on point here, so I hope that answers the question. I'll fire this off to you. And I want to give a big shout out to this, to this wonderful woman and her son, Lee. I think she said, his, his name is Lee. So Lee, get on board, my friend. Get on board, and don't let anybody else tell you the politics works any other way, because it doesn't. So rock on, Lee, and you got a great mom. I'll tell you that. So let's see here. Kyle says, and we will pass Stand Your Ground and other gun laws because we are feared. It'll happen someday. It'll happen. It'll happen. Don't know when. Don't know when. Let's see here. Do we have a troll? Do we have a troll? We'll see here. Now, what a terrible thing to say. Philip, Philip, now how could you say such a terrible, hurtful thing? Philip says, not all females are as dumb as those in Minnesota. Well, I'm going to ban you because you're a loser. And let me tell you about the women in Minnesota. The women in Minnesota are the best fighters, frankly. They're better than a lot of the men. They're, they're better. They just are. The, the men in St. Paul, the guys in the Capitol, most of them are cowards. The, the women are fighters. I'm thinking about Bonnie right now, who's watching, okay? Mary is, is a fighter, okay? Mandy is a fighter. There are so many who are absolute fighters. Michelle is a fighter. Teresa. These are women who have shown more courage than I've seen out of most, out of most. These are fantastic women. Wilhelmin. So Philip, you can pound sand, and I don't know if you're just a little frustrated or what have you, but the women of Minnesota gun rights, the women of Minnesota are some of the best in the nation. They're phenomenal people. And quite frankly, you can say what you want about Minnesota gun rights, you can say what you want about me, but you don't talk about our women that way. Philip has been banned. Goodbye, Philip. Goodbye. Get a life. Hopefully, he finds a life somewhere else. Terrible, terrible. As Jeff Hopkin says, the only dumb females in Minnesota are the lying commie mommies at Moms Demand Action. We agree. We agree. All right, he's gone. Bye-bye, Philip. Enjoy life somewhere else, not on our page. You don't insult our women, because quite frankly, our women would probably whoop the crap out of him. I mean, for real. Get him, box him in his ears. It'll happen. I'm telling you, some of these women would do that to him. I'm not lying at all. I'm not lying. But guys, that's what I've got for about now. I want, I'm deploying this, this, this video out for a bunch of people to watch, so I don't want to stretch this on too far. Christine, Christine's another gal. She's just like him. Just, these are fantastic women. They're just tougher than nails. I'm telling you, I have seen people like Teresa and people like Michelle and others wade into crowds of anti-gunners, of, of raging, pro-aborts, all kinds of people, just fearless, just fearless, okay? I don't give out compliments for nothing. Nobody should. Nobody should. But when I say these women are absolute fighters, I mean it, because I've seen it. I've seen it. It's tremendous. So to wrap this up, William Spooner says, what's going on? He says, so that's what's going on for right now. It is Wednesday, and we are being told that there's very likely going to be a special session. Speaker Melissa Hortman said that they want to have this special session over before, before Memorial Day, okay? Which happens to be my birthday this year. Hasn't been that way since 2013. I was born on Memorial Day, actually, a long time ago. But it's, it's going to happen very quickly in the next few days, very likely, and it's going to go very quickly when it does happen. It might only be around, the special session might only take a couple of days, maybe, maybe as much as, as one to three, as little as one to three, okay? So that's coming up very quickly. We're being told that there is no gun control on the agenda, that both the Republicans and the Democrats are caving to gun owners and deciding not to attack our gun rights in this special session. We are not going to take that at face value, not even a little bit. So we need you guys to send your pre-written email to your lawmakers using our Action Center on top of this video and in the comments section where you're watching this. If you're watching this on YouTube, you can grab this link in the description of this video down below. And if you're getting this through email, you can, there, there'll be another link right below this video in the email itself, and you can, and you can send it there. So keep the pressure on. This fight is almost over. It's almost over. But as Gary says, more missiles, more missiles. We are not going to celebrate too soon. We are not going to shut down. Look, how many, haven't we all seen those videos online where they're sprinting towards the finish line? Then that guy goes, yeah, yeah, I won. And then the guy busts right on past him and wins. It happens. It happens. It ain't going to happen to Minnesota gun rights. So keep the pressure on email, phone call, Facebook message, tweet, whatever the case, all of them, do all of those things. Brian says he's already sent his emails. Thank you, Brian. You're fantastic. Now, Wilhelmin says, never, ever trust a politician. I love it. I love it, I love it, I love it. No. Alan wants to know if I want to meet and greet with Hillary Clinton for my birthday gift. Maybe if she's wearing a bag over her head? No. How about no? Absolutely not. So guys, that's what I've got for right now. I'm going to hop off. Stay tuned for this special session. Keep contacting your lawmakers. I know, I know, we're rolling into holiday season. I know Memorial Day weekend is the kickoff of the summer, and it's time to, you know, it's time to drink some beer and flip some brats and, and pay homage to our phenomenal, well, to the people who make us free, to the people who made us free, our veterans, our fallen soldiers. That is what this weekend is about, but don't fall down on the job. Don't fall down on the job, okay? Don't just shut down because it's summertime. Keep the pressure on. It won't be much longer, but we've got to keep the heat on, because here's what we're being told, that the Minnesota Legislature in this year, 2019, the Minnesota Legislature has received more emails, more phone calls, more Facebook messages, more communication on the issue of red flag gun seizures and universal gun registration opposing, mind you, opposing these things. They have received more communication on this issue than any other issue ever. Nobody in St. Paul can remember a time when they got more emails, phone calls, and messages from any voting block of people on any issue ever. The members and supporters of Minnesota gun rights have raised a freaking roof in St. Paul, and they're hearing us loud and clear. But we've got to keep it up until this special session is over. It's going to come very quickly, and it's going to be over very quickly. So every day, every day, send your emails. Send them. Make the phone calls. Don't stop. Don't stop. We're almost there. We're almost there. And frankly, the eyes of the nation are on us, right? Because aren't we the land of Ilhan Omar? Aren't we the land of radical leftists? Aren't we the land of 10,000 radical liberals and more? That's the way a lot of America sees us. And after the 2018 elections, they thought it's over. For Minnesota, their gun rights are over. It's done. States have lost their gun rights with far, 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 far less opposition. States have turned into anti-gun states. But Minnesota gun rights, you guys, we are holding the line, and people are watching. Is it over? Is it over for us? Are our gun rights going to be stripped away? Does Minnesota become California, Massachusetts, New York? No. The answer is no. Not today. Not today. We're going to fight this. We have been fighting this. Let's show America. Let's show, and these are great people too, but let's show them. Minnesota's not going down without a fight. We're not giving up our gun rights without a fight, and we're fighting like hell, and we have been all year. We have been all year and all last year and the year before, and we are never going away. Never. So while they may try to pass every leftist garbage through the Capitol in St. Paul, while they may elect psychopaths like Ilhan Omar, our gun rights, if we have anything to say about it, are going to stay intact. They're going to stay intact. But I need your help to make that happen. Got to win. We've got to win. We don't have a choice, because if our gun rights are gone, baby, they're gone, and it'll be very hard to get them back. Can't let it happen. Can't let it happen. Got to shut it down. Send your pre-written emails. Make your phone calls. Thank you for fighting with us. It is our great pleasure. It is our honor to fight with you, to fight for you, to fight for your children, to fight for your grandchildren. Thank you, Jeff. Jeff says right here, he says, Jeff Hopkin says, your future generations are counting on you to protect their freedoms. It's so true. My wife, she tells me that when, when I do Facebook Live, sometimes she watches at home, and I've got a nearly three-year-old son, William, little blond-haired, blue-eyed, beautiful. I love him. And when, when he watches, when he watches, he sits there and goes, Daddy gun rights. Is Daddy doing gun rights? And sometimes he'll walk around the house, and he'll, he'll just, he'll walk up to my wife, and he'll say, I want to watch gun rights. This kid already, he loves freedom. He knows what gun rights are. He knows about firearms. He's, he's just, he's counting on me. He's counting on you. Our families are counting on us to preserve that for them, and we owe it to them. We owe it to them, because our fathers saved it for us, and our grandfathers for them, and on back it goes. We must, we must, we must preserve this, the last best hope. We must. So make those phone calls, send those emails, fight with us. We're fighting with you. When this fight's over, hey, you can kick back a little bit, but this fight's coming back again and again and again, and we're going to be here to face it head-on every single time, every single time. So guys, that's what I have for right now. I'm going to- I'm gonna hop off here. God bless you. Enjoy the rest of your week. I'll be back with more Facebook Live updates possibly tomorrow. And we've gotta keep the heat on. Gotta keep the heat on. We're not going anywhere. So, all right, that's what I have, guys. Take care. Share this video if you would. Share this video with your family and your friends. Get the information out there. Get it out there to, to, to your family and friends, to anybody you know who you think needs to hear this type of content. Maybe you've got kids in high school or in college who are being totally brainwashed into hating their own freedom, into hating their own Second Amendment, into hating their Constitution and the founding fathers. Sit them down. Tell them, listen up. Listen up. All right, guys, I'm gonna sign off. Take care. I love you. I love fighting with you. And I'll be back with more updates tomorrow.